Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I now call to order the public work session of the Portsmouth City Council. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Rosa.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here. And our first speaker to come forward is going to be a presentation by our Commissioner of Revenue, Mr. Franklin D. Edmondson. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel, Madam City Manager, Mr. Attorney, Madam Clerk, and Madam Sergeant-at-Arms, fellow citizens, and my friends all. Good evening. I'm Frankie Edmondson, and currently it's my pleasure and my privilege to serve as your Commissioner of the Revenue here in Portsmouth. And we're going to talk tonight about personal property tax ratio, City of Portsmouth. And today is obviously made eight, excuse me, March the 8th. You have in front of you some documents, and they'll also be on the slides. I'm going to read through them and touch base on some things that we see may be of interest to all of us. And then if you have questions, Mr. Mayor, at your time, we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have going through the program. So if we turn, on the bottom right corner is your page number. So if we're going to reference from slide to slide, it'd be helpful to reference that. I'd like to take a quick moment to tell you, the first slide on number two, page number two, is a, this advances, I guess, right? So let me do that. There we go. You advancing it? Thank you.
I can't.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so that's our staff. And I'd like to introduce three of our staff members very quickly, and then ask some others to stand. A combined experience of over 197 years of related tax service to our community. So I'd like to first introduce, my chief deputy and chief of staff is Mr. Cardell Patillo, Senior. Ask him to stand. And joining Cardell is Chief Deputy Wanda Smith. And currently, Wanda is President of the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers. So we're happy to have her in our office. And next to Wanda is our senior deputy, Ms. Gwen Thompson. Let's make her welcome, please. And, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'm going to ask some of the other members of our staff who are here to please stand. And I'd like to thank them for being here today and every day, because, as you well know, we've been through a tough season with COVID, and they've been working every day. We take some time to be off, and we've done everything we can in support of the citizens. And we just want to thank you for your efforts in support of our office. And this is a good example to show that teamwork really works. So thank you for your support of us. In preparation for tonight, I would like to take this opportunity to thank our city attorney and his staff. Mr. Burl Stromberg was very helpful. As you know, we're in some uncharted times, we're in unprecedented times, and he was very helpful in helping us with some of that. So we want to thank him and his staff, and also our city clerk getting all this together. So thank you and your staffs for helping us. I know sometimes it's challenging at best when you've got a lot of time, but unfortunately, where we are today, it's not a lot of time available to us. And so I just want to thank you for helping us prepare for tonight's presentation. If we'll go to number three, please, and I'll just brief the next couple of pages. One is a Master Commissioner of Revenue designation, and you can read that, of course, at your leisure. And number four is a Master Deputy Commissioner of the Revenue designation. And likewise, both of these associations are through the University of Virginia, and they're through our state association, and they're recognized by Virginia State Comp Board. So we've got several of our deputies. And what I mean by what I said a few moments ago, working together, obviously, if we don't get the funding from our, your support, you know, from local budgets, then we can't send these individuals away to do professional development opportunities across the state, or sometimes with Zoom and other things, too. But we've got some dedicated staff members who are learning everything we can regarding Virginia tax and local taxation or revenue generation. I am happy to let you know and let remind you that our office is accredited through the Commissioners of Revenue Association of Virginia. Not all are. There are 127 commissioners across the state, and not all of them, maybe about half are accredited. We were one of the first in the Hampton Roads region, and one of the first in the state to be recognized. And so just want to let you know that the journey continues, and we want to make sure that we're on the cutting edge of technology in that regard. Onto the purpose of being here tonight, and I don't want to be too taxing on your time. So I'm going to read through the slides, and of course, if you have any questions, we'll come to that. So we're on page number six now, and that's a personal property tax, Virginia State Code And that says that automobiles, you'll see there, automobiles should be valued by means of a recognized pricing guide. And then it tells the commissioner some instructions, and it says, "He shall use the base value specified in such guide, which may be either average retail, wholesale, or loan value." So that's a quick little review of how we get to some of the numbers that we get to. Believe it or not, we don't just pull them out of thin air, like some people think, but we do actually have a pricing guide. If we go to page number seven, this is a statement that we received from the National Automobile Dealers Association, which you just heard from the code section. They referenced that we use that. And basically, it says, in part, and I'll read this for some of our taxpayers at home, it says, "The increases in automobile values that you have observed in our guide are simply a reflection of the price increases that we at JD Power have observed in the U.S. automotive market. This dramatic increase in automotive values has been caused in part by, but not limited to, supply chain issues, the global computer chip shortage, and reduction of used car, I mean, excuse me, used vehicle supply volume." That was offered to us by Mr. Ben Jackson. He's a Senior Market Analyst with Valuation Services, JD Powers &amp; Associates, National Automobile Dealers Association. And he issued that to us on February 18th of this year. And why is that important? Because he kind of hits home why some of these numbers are headed in the direction they are. If we go to page number eight, you'll see we have, assessments have radically increased in calendar year 22. A lot of times, we talk, when we talk about revenues, we're looking at FY for fiscal year, and the code requires us to use the calendar year for assessment purposes. So as you'll know, over the next couple of weeks, you'll be having some discussions about fiscal year, which will begin on July 1st and on June 30. This actually runs the calendar year, the assessment for assessment purposes, July, excuse me, January 1st through December 31st annually. Okay, we have seen vehicle assessments increase anywhere from 16% to upwards of 89% and higher year over year, according to NADA pricing guide, showing a medium increase of approximately 54% in general. And what that means is, is that every day, people driving cars in and out of the city, Virginia uses January 1st as a tax day. Portsmouth is a prorating locality, which means if your car's here prior to the 15th of the month, you pay for that month. If you leave, if you're here after the 15th, you pay for the following month. If you leave prior to the 15th, then you pay for, I mean, excuse me, you don't pay for that month. And if you come in, I mean, if you leave after the 16th, then you do. So it's a recognized standard that we do, we have with reciprocating localities around the state, that if you are here on or after the 16th, then, you know, it works out, and you move to the following month. So that's important to us when we look at that 54 number. I don't want to get too focused on that just yet. So if we move from there to page number nine, this gives you an understanding, or at least a layout, if you will, of regional property tax rates. And the rate defined in this particular section is a charge payment or price fixed according to the ratio, scale, or standard, such as a unit charge or ratio used in assessing property tax. And I call this to your attention, obviously, we are, we want to be first in a lot of categories. This may not be the one we want to stay first in, because as you see, we're the highest, one of the highest, excuse me, localities in the region, where Portsmouth is at $5 per 100, and then you go down incrementally through Hampton Roads to Gloucester is $2.95 per 100. And, you know, I've been watching some of your meetings online, and I've seen some of the discussions, and I want to concur with Councilman Dr. Whitaker with regards to recognizing that just because you change a rate in some respects, but the value increases doesn't necessarily mean the tax has dropped. So, I mean, we're on to something, looking at the burden our taxpayers will see going forward with regards to rate versus assessed value. On page number nine, we get into the weeds a little bit here. I want to emphasize or overemphasize that all of these figures are estimated. This is a snapshot in time, and this is what we're looking at. It will change potentially, but we're going to give you some round numbers in hopes that we'll get to where we need to through our budget cycle. So we've been working with the manager, CFO, and the deputy manager to try to watch these numbers and keep a mindful, you know, watchful eye on these things, and alert when necessary. But we want to be in a round number at this point, and we'll get more specific as we get to the numbers you'll be voting for, hopefully, this year for the budget. We're using a number in that first box, you see where it says a 40% increase, right in that category, and you can read across the line roughly. For the first time that I'm aware of, you're going to see the third box there, where it shows over $1 billion in assessed value in Portsmouth. That's the first time in my tenure here that I've seen that number rise to that level. That's imperative, in part, because that's what's driving the numbers we're going to talk about in subsequent slides. And so if you go down to the asterisks, these numbers are considered and offered prior to the personal property tax relief that you'll be considering. And we've been exploring the possibility, because of these assessments are going up. As you know, the General Assembly and Commonwealth of Virginia established that a personal property tax relief in 2004, and those values have not changed since 2004. So we get an estimated 9.3 million, I believe it is, and as the value increases, obviously, it's less units of the cars. And so the reality of it is, is we have been around 53, 54 in past years, and we're probably looking at in the neighborhood of an estimate, maybe 45% going forward, as the market allows for, you know, for that. Understanding that if the state provides the funds and we're over, then we're only going to get that 9.3, 9.4 million. We're not getting more. So then the burden for the city is going to be, we'll have to cover the rest of that percentage rate off. Estimated assessed values divided by 100 and multiplied by tax rate, our current tax rate is $5 per 100. And you remember, that was expressed in a prior slide. If we go to page 11, it's a little more of the facts and figures that we've been looking at year over year. We had an actual in calendar year 18, and you see the numbers represented there. We go down to calendar year 2020, and you'll see that first billion-dollar assessed value. That means all the cars that we're looking at, all the vehicles, rather, I should say vehicles, not all cars. It could also be trucks and some motorcycles and other things that are personal property related. But what we're talking about are what's assessed by that guide, which NADA, National Automobile Dealers Association, is a nationally recognized pricing guide by the insurance industry, financial industry, taxing industry, those types of things. So that's why we're following those numbers today, and why we have been up to this point. Excuse me. I don't usually talk this much. You know how reserved and quiet I am. Unfortunately, I'm getting a little parched here, but I apologize for that purpose. But just want to explain to my fellow citizens that I don't usually talk this much, right, Mayor? So if you go down, the nuts and bolts of where we're going to look at, you got, you're all smart individuals. So we're really talking CY 2020, estimated assessed value increases by approaching $15 million. This is an estimate. Doesn't mean we're going to realize $15 million, but it does indicate that that's what we're seeing in the numbers today, and what we have been seeing since January. Why is that important? Because the city will receive, that's year over year from last year. So basically, if you look down from calendar year 18 to calendar year 2022, and you'll see, if you go to the third row, you'll see where that 52 million, 640, and then you go up, the one above that was 37 million. So that was, the 37 million represented a 13.4 increase. That was on last year. And this year, you'll see right below that is a 40% increase. That's our medium that we're using in our office for discussion purposes. So that's what we're seeing. Some cars have gone over, like we said in the previous slide, 89% increase on some vehicles, some maybe a little less, but 95% of them are seeing an increase. This might be a good time to say also that in the council members packets that you received at your desk, we did include a letter, executive summary, if you will, of this presentation. So you'll see a written letter there that'll explain to you also that that's about a 95, 95% across-the-board increase on those vehicles. Okay? On page 12, we're looking at assessed values. This is estimated 2022 vehicle assessment growth. For the first time, we're starting to look at, what does this really mean? What do these numbers mean for us? And we're just overemphasizing for your review and consideration, the 40% increases, what the previous slide expressed, and this just drills down, if you will, on some of those numbers. Those numbers, again, I will emphasize are estimated at this point. And why are they estimated? Because you'll know from previous discussions that we've had, is that we have one primary billing that'll take place prior to June 5th. So we all get to bill, and bills are due on June 5th. And then, beginning in July of this year and every year, we have seven remaining bills. So we'll have supplemental billing cycles that'll take us into February of next year. And if you think that we, even as good as we are, can tell you what we're going to get in February of next year, I'd be taking all bets for the Super Bowl, for the World Series, World Cup, any, I mean, it's just a hard number to try to see. We don't have a crystal ball. But of course, we do produce a monthly return that we share with the manager, with the CFO and others, that gives us the monthly review of those hard numbers that we are seeing coming in. So this is the estimate predicated on that 40%, 40% estimate. Okay, if we go to 13, please. 13 is just for your information. And this year, the Virginia General Assembly and its infinite wisdom, and we all know that they're proposed, they're still there now, and they're proposed to be there, I guess are scheduled to be there through Saturday, which is the 12th. Who knows if they're going to adjourn then or not, because they've got a lot of important issues to decide. But this is one measure. Virginia House Bill 1239 is a tangible personal property tax classification. And what all of this means is, is that they would give us specific language that will allow us to go in and remove or address a specific, specific category, which would be in a class of taxation. Today, if we change a rate, like ours is $5 per 100, then we have to change that rate for every class under that, excuse me, every category under that class. So business tangible and other taxes would have to be addressed or adjusted likewise, meaning that if we went to a lower tax rate without this instrument in place, we wouldn't be allowed to do so. Or, excuse me, without significant burden to the city on our tax base. So we're not, at this point, recommended doing that today, but if this is successful, as of yesterday, this bill was, it's a Senate substitute, and was rejected by the House, in the House. And so it doesn't mean it won't come back up, and we hope it does, but if it doesn't, then we're, if we do change a rate, which is a possibility, then that rate will have to be reflected in every category in our tax book. So having said that, this bill does have an emergency clause, so upon the signature from the governor, it's my understanding, I'm not an attorney, but it's my understanding that our, that it'll take effect, and then we could use it for consideration for this tax year. As you well know, we're accelerated. A lot of our colleagues around the state have different times of when they do their tax book in Portsmouth. We're accelerated. Our office probably gets as many, if not more, calls, visits, and mail going out than any other department in the city for the whole year. When you invite 64,000 people to pay, you know, their taxes, of course, working with the treasurer to do that, when we prepare those bills and help them get them out, then of course, that's our tax book. We hear from a lot of people between now and June, you know, June 5th. And so we're on schedule to have our tax book complete by April 15th, as we have done year over year for many years. And so we don't see an interruption in that. Of course, if we did see that, we would be immediately talking to you and the manager and others about, you know, for that, because we want to be prepared for the fiscal year, which is coming around on July 1st. Okay? If we go to 14, I'm going to read some of these out to you, because this is our, calendar year 22, personal property uniform assessment methodology. The City of Portsmouth has experienced an increase, an increase in approximately 40% in the assessed value of vehicles. Vehicles are assessed using the National Automobile Dealers Association pricing guide. We assess vehicles at 100% of clean loan value, as required by Virginia State Code 58.1-3503A3. The valuation guide is used in every locality in the Commonwealth of Virginia to date, and we use a fair and equitable, uniform assessment methodology throughout our assessment and revenue profile annually. So that means that we take a hard line on making sure that we provide a fair and equitable review of every tax that we administer throughout the year. Moving forward, if we go to personal property tax, Virginia State Code 58.1-3503B allows us to use a ratio. So a ratio indicates a quotient of two mathematical expressions. Allows a, 58.1-3503B allows a ratio to be used with the concurrence of the local governing body. As such, it is clear to me that this is the time for a ratio to be considered. From Lynchburg to Hampton and all across our Commonwealth, Commissioners of the Revenue are working together on this type of proposal in order to support our taxpayers and localities as we all are affected by this concern. Number 16, calendar year 22, personal property tax insights. In light of the current and uncertain global economic environment, we recommend that the City Council apply 75% ratio to our assessed value for all vehicles valued from NADA used car guide. This includes all vehicles which NADA, that are with NADA assessments, including personal as well as commercial use. Rollovers and sliding scale are not included, as they will be assessed through a process. As proposed, this rationale is mutually beneficial to the city and all taxpayers affected by this guide. Taxpayers will receive a standardized step increase assessment this year, and the city will receive an estimated increase as the proposed FY 23 city budget will reconcile. Page number 17 gives you an illustration of that proposed increase. So this is a proposed overall estimated benefit comparison, if approved. The City of Portsmouth estimated benefit is 75% under this ratio, and our taxpayers' estimated benefit is a 25% offset. So basically, if we look at around numbers, and we say $16 million would be the, would be the estimated increase, if that's what it ultimately becomes, then we would look at a $4 million offset to our taxpayers to help them relieve the burden of that increase, and then the city obviously would get the 12, remaining 12% as you decide through your budget process. So this is an option, as you'll see going forward, that we could consider, or you, excuse me, you can consider. The options is, one, continue the status quo, and we just stay, you know, doing what we do currently, where everything's 100% with no ratio. Number two, lower the current tax rate for this year, which we, that is an option, but we have to lower them all, and so therefore, we're not recommending that. And then, number three, we could use a ratio to offset the inflationary effects of this, these increases. As a public service announcement, I would like to let you know and all of our taxpayers that on Saturday, May 14th, 2022, from 9:00 to 1:00, we'll be in the County Street Garage doing appeals on any taxpayer who chooses to do that. We do appeals every day in City Hall, and we make appointments. If you know of someone that is in need of an appeal, they really think that the assessment is too far out of line, obviously, we want to do that. I do them, members of our staff do them, and we're prepared. This particular assess, we've been doing this now?
About eight years.
Yeah, we've been doing this about eight years, which is on a Saturday. When somebody can't be out of work on a Monday through Friday, of course, we'll do it. So we will do an assessed value on that, I mean, excuse me, in a, in a appeal on that particular Saturday, or if somebody wants to set an appointment, they can't get to City Hall, we're happy to help them in that regard. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you or any member might have at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Edmondson. And our first question will come from Dr. Whitaker. Sir, you have the floor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Edmonds. The, as you stated, these are some difficult economic times, and I'm just curious, on that racial analysis, how did you come up with 75%?
Okay, let's go back to this. Okay, so on page number 17, the ratio, we've been in discussions with Commissioners of Revenue around the state, and we kind of chose to initially start with that premise. It doesn't mean we have to stay there. The Commissioners advise, obviously, and you consent. So the reality is that the decision is in your hands, and if you say do a greater, you know, ratio, then we'll consider that. And we'll do what the council wishes with regards to that. So 70, 25% was a starting point for the dialogue. We had, we did, we didn't have that last year. So we want to make sure that with the concurrence together as partners, we're going to be moving forward. So 25%, that's a good question, but it's just a starting point.
Right, well, based on slide number 11?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know.
Okay.
Based on slide number 11, and if we want to really help the citizens as much as we can on this, in fiscal year, what, '21, we had a significant jump.
We did, 13.4%.
Right, and we didn't address it at that time.
We didn't. That's correct.
So in order to lessen this impact on our citizens as much as possible, has it been considered where we can hold the rate where it is?
You mean the, the rate? Oh, the rate is $5 per 100, it's going to stay the same?
Well, the ratio.
Oh, the ratio.
I mean, where we can adjust the ratio so that it has the impact of the citizens being where they are today, without an increase.
As I understand your question, the answer is yes, because basically, this does that. The 25% is, we didn't have a reduction last year. So basically, they paid a full amount with the 13.4% increase.
Right, so if you do the ratio, they get a 25% offset?
Yes, sir.
Right, so is that, does that mean?
That's reflected in the number. If you see the 52 million at the bottom of the slide screen?
Right.
And take away that 37 million, roughly, just rough numbers here, sir, we're going to get to 15 million in that number there that's under calendar, estimated assessed value. to get to 15 million in, in that number there that's under calendar estimated assessed value, and then if we, going forward, roughly, that's going to be, like, if we use that term of round numbers would be 16 million, then the city would pay 4 million for the offset. So you're roughly talking in the neighborhood of about 3.4 million, or 3 points, I don't, I don't have that, we, we're looking at round numbers. So the one, the, the city would still benefit, and then the taxpayer would benefit. We can look at any percentage you choose, this just seemed to be acceptable around, you know, Hampton Roads and other communities.
Let me make sure I'm following you.
I'm sorry?
Let me make sure I'm following you correctly.
Okay.
The 52 million represents what the city would be collecting in tax revenue.
If we do nothing.
Right, so, like, my issue I'm raising is that, at 75%, that becomes a 25% offset for the citizen.
Yes, sir.
So 25%, that 40% becomes 15, a 15% increase, okay? What I'm suggesting is, how do we keep this at where it is today? How, what type of ratio would we need so that our citizens do not see an increase from fiscal year '21?
Okay, today, today, we don't use a ratio. So they're going to pay whatever that 100% increase, if their bill goes up by 10% or 30% or 40% of that, I mean, in other words?
I guess to make as simple as possible, how do, what do we need to do so that the citizens do not realize an increase on their personal property tax as it relates to the automobile?
Obviously, we can come back at some point in time with some different numbers, but the short answer is, is increase the offset. In other words, we'd have to give a greater percentage back to the taxpayer. And I think there's at least one locality in our area that's considering doing just that, because they've received COVID funding and other things. I mean, our goal initially was to have this discussion from, you know, on behalf of the taxpayer. So as a taxpayer advocate, which I'm, I'm glad, you know, that, that you see this too, is that this only is a starting point. So every taxpayer, 95% of our taxpayers potentially going to be affected, and so we could, you could, consider using a greater percentage. This is, just happens to be the starting point.
So what would be your recommendation to council, if that's what we desire to do? What policy do we need to put in place to actualize that?
Mr. Mayor, okay, so, what we need to do in this particular sense is work, continue to work with the manager and with the CFO through the budget process, so we see it to the totality of it. Because every week and every month, we're going to get a clearer picture, with the understanding that the, the concurrence or the, the feeling is that, obviously, if we want to help taxpayers, this is currently, we don't need any Virginia law change. We've been discussing with the city attorney's office and others, and we don't need a change in the law. We can agree to do it going forward, and then, as they refine their numbers, we can be refining our numbers, and you'll have a more exact, unless, it might be 25%, it might be 30, it might be, I'm, I'm with you, I mean, we're, we're happy to impose whatever ratio you choose.
Well, I'm only, I'm only one voice on counsel.
Right.
I would hope we would get a consensus that we would not implement any policies that would reflect an increase on that, how, how that's worked out, you know, that's for the finance side. But since we didn't address it in '21, and it was a significant increase then, I think that there's some relief that's needed for our citizens.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, I can promise you, we'll work tirelessly every day, every night, as long as it takes, to try to seek whatever, you know, is applicable to everyone. Because I feel, I'm with you, mine's going up, ours are going up, everybody's, we did a search on the people on the dice, and all of yours are going up. So we're all going to be there together. Yes, sir.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
So, Mr. Edmonds?
Yes, sir.
The essence of what you're saying is, there was a huge impact on the public last year, and it's three times that much this year. And last year, it wasn't addressed, but it's only right that we address and not put this burden on the public. Therefore, you're saying that we take the tab of the offset, and the citizens will be fine, and then the funds come right back to us, and we're going to be fine.
Well, yes, sir, as I understand, Mr. Mayor, as I understand the question, I mean, excuse me, your statement, and, and I can respond to that, is that it's a mutually beneficial situation where the taxpayer, potentially at your direction, will get a break, and the city will ob, obviously receive the, what is remaining in that increase. And so, to Dr., Councilman Dr. Whitaker's point is, that if you increase that increase, I mean, excuse me, that offset, then obviously, it would benefit the taxpayer. If you reduce it, then the city would have a higher percentage.
Well, I favor reducing the offset for this year, period.
Unfortunately, I don't have a vote on that, but if I did, I might support you.
Councilmember Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I think Dr. Whitaker probably is closer to what I'm talking about. You know, in 2021, the increase was 13.4%, which was not normal. So I want to, I want to see us roll it back to last year's figure, not give citizens an increase. It's found money for the, for the city. City hadn't done anything. Citizens are the ones taking it on the chin for something that's out of their control. It's just a supply and demand situation. And more than likely, and I would say that for one year, more than likely, the market will adjust back the other way. In fact, I heard today that, just in the month, used car prices fell, I don't know, a couple of percent, something like that. But until that happens, I don't think we should pass any increase on, to the citizens beyond what it was last year. In other words, roll back to the 37, 37,600,000 figure and send the bills out accordingly. And I think that's close to what Dr. Whitaker is advocating, and I agree with that. People, people are getting hit from all directions. Gasoline, pretty soon, it's going to cost 20 gallon tank of gasoline is going to run you $85, if it's not already in some markets. Food inflation is through the roof. Everything you buy is through the roof. So we, we don't need to be passing this increase on this year. That's just adding insult to injury, from my estimation. And hopefully, management can come back with that and put it in the budget going forward and, and take into account for that. And I believe it's a consensus here, probably, to do that very thing, Mayor, I suspect.
Councilman Moody, thank you for your comments, and we're going to now pass the floor to Councilwoman Lucas Burke, and then I have a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Edmondson, thank you for the presentation. I think we are all a little bit more educated on the personal property assessments and how this rolls down to us as citizens and our constituents as well. My question is with page 13, with the Virginia House Bill 1239. I just wondered if that was some legislation that you all implemented, or did it come from another locality, and as a result, it is being shared across the Commonwealth of Virginia? And is this a recommendation that, that we want to see go through? Is it going to be advantageous to us? And I concur with my colleagues to see that, that ratio be put in to be, benefit our citizens, because, you know, we all are driving different classes and levels of cars, and, you know, some antiques, you don't have to pay as much, but some other vehicles, you have to pay out the roof, and, you know, we want it to be a level playing field for our citizens. So House Bill 1239.
Yeah, Mayor, House Bill 1239, obviously, was put in by a member of, of the House of Delegates, and it didn't originate from our office or from the city of Portsmouth, because we join you, you know, in your legislative proposals and so forth, and work very closely with Ms. Neal with regards to that. She's been very helpful in keeping us abreast on these things, and we work well when she needs information from our office. And so, we, this is something that our association, Commissioners Revenue Association of Virginia, has been on a watch. Obviously, it's going to affect all of us, and so, Virginia Municipal League, you know, they had a legislative day recently, that was something they highlighted. It's another tool in the toolbox to address this concern. So this is one option, that is another. Unfortunately, today, that bill doesn't appear to be going, but as you know, legislative bodies can change their mind, and before the general assembly adjourns, Sani Di, they could bring this measure back, could be changed, because they didn't, they, they, it was in the nature of a substitute issue. Somebody changed something in the language of that bill, so they're still addressing it. So this bill would allow us, as I understand it, to go in specifically to those rates and drill down just into those rates, just for passenger vehicles and so forth, to say, we want to make that change at that level. Then we possibly wouldn't be considering a ratio, we would make the adjustment from a rate change. Unfortunately, Virginia being a Dillon Rule state, your, this legislative body does not have the legal authority to make that change currently. This would allow you to do that, which would then direct us to administer that. And so, the reason we started, we looked at $1. The reason we got to 25, you know, percent versus, you know, whatever other, that was just a placeholder to get the dialogue started, which we're all saying very similar things, but if you have $1, then 25% of that dollar would go to taxpayer offset, and then the rest of it would come to the city as realized through your budget. So we would welcome this opportunity as another option to present to you, but of course, we're going to follow the direction that this council, you know, provides to us, and then we'll administer the tax policy accordingly.
Thank you for the presentation.
Dr. Whitaker, then, Councilman Woodard, and then we need to move on, because we have a hard, huge schedule tonight, okay?
This, this question is for our CFO. As you've been in budget preparations, were you preparing the budget based on this CY '22 expectation, or the 52 million?
Absolutely not.
Okay, good, okay, that's, that's fine. So it wouldn't, so it wouldn't be any impact to us if we stayed level where we are today? I mean, as far as your budget preparation?
If we stay right where we are today, we will be fine.
Okay.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your presentation too, Commissioner Edmonds. I, I know, I agree with my colleagues as well, you know, all this inflation going on, all these series of events that's happening throughout the world. But we're, we're looking at calendar year '21. You know, I'm just curious, I know a lot of curious minds want to know as well. Calendar year '20, you know, I know we want to roll back the wrong rates to last year, but, you know, how do we even get from 1.4 to 13.4, you know? Is that, is that the unknown of that, this, this chip? We didn't have these chips for these cars, is, is that what was taking place then?
Mayor, what, what that really represents is COVID-19. So we rolled into calendar '21, and obviously, we were uncharted territory then, and we were on a boat, we're getting in the water, so we didn't have navigation, if you will, because a lot of people weren't, weren't working, they were home, and so there were a lot of changes calendar year '21, from '20 to '21, that's where that increased, because if people weren't making those cars available. The initial was in the used car market, where, like, let's say, fleet vehicles and other vehicles, some plants end up closing, not necessarily for supply chain, but they just weren't working and making them. And so it was beginning of COVID that we saw that. But of course, we started identifying that, but a 13% increase is a lot different than an 89%. And I, and I, you know, we can't get into specifics of the vehicle, but we've seen some in the upwards of 106% increase. That's the one we looked at earlier today. It's a specific type of vehicle, is 106% increase over last year. That's over one year. The most prudent and measured approach, Mayor, as we see, is to continue to work with the manager and the budget team to bring back to you some options, because obviously, we do have some funding needs, and, and we, you know, we, I'm not speaking tonight to what they might be, we just want to give you options with regards to where your revenue stands, and then how you spend those funds, you know, courses up to this body.
Well, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
I just want to make sure as we're looking at that, so, these do not represent fiscal years, these are purely calendar years, January 1, starting at January 1.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So it is, is that it, sir? Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, I was, I was just curious why the law wasn't wrong in '20?
In '20? In '20, you got a 1.4% increase, and then last year?
Well, when I said 20, I mean, I'm talking near the, in the year when we saw this rate was going to jump.
We, we saw the rate starting to increase, obviously, in calendar year '21, and we were concerned about it, and we reported those, but as you might recall, we were all trying to subside, you know, from whatever the COVID effects were, and we had some changes in the city around that time, and so some of the individuals that we were reporting to may not still be with us. And so, the reality of where we are is, we've known about these, we, and so, we're happy to report, and like I said, you've got my contact information in the book in front of you, and whatever we can do to try to help you get a greater understanding of this, but we've, we've recognized those numbers, you know, since they began. So that's how we got these. I mean, we report these on a monthly basis to the CFO, and then, as our, our feeling is that they're reporting that numbers up to the manager and then to, to council, but, I mean, we, we've seen this, we just didn't know that the increase was significant enough, but when you go from a 1.4% increase, because you'll notice a year prior, went down from 2.6 to 1.4. So we saw, you know, we, we saw that, that the number went down, and then went up to 13.4, and then went to 40%. That 40% is our placeholder, and it, and some individuals going to see even greater than that.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Edmondson. And I've listened intently to my colleagues and to you. I think probably the most prudent way to move forward, because this is an anomaly, given what we've experienced, and I believe, based on what I'm hearing from other localities, no one was really prepared for how to handle this situation. That would probably be fair to say. In any event, the prudent way to move forward, I think, and you already said, is to work with the manager and CFO and her staff. I know that we as a council have asked the manager, and will ask the manager, to bring back some options for us to consider. There is no doubt that, you know, if there is a way that we can provide relief to our citizens, certainly, we recognize the impacts, the financial impacts, that everyone is going through and the difficulty. So if it is okay, if I can get a consensus from my colleagues, to ask you and the manager and the CFO to continue to confer on this matter, and perhaps bring back some options for us to consider. Do I have a consensus on that, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
So if you can move forward in that, that direction, I think that's what's prescribed.
Yes, sir.
And if you don't have anything else, I want to thank you and your staff for helping us navigate through this difficult time. You guys are wonderful to work with, and we appreciate all the work that you all do on a daily basis.
Thank you very much. And like I said, if anybody has any questions following this, you got our contact information, and obviously, we're downstairs every day, so we're happy to help. Thank you.
Madam City Manager?
Yes, our next presentation will be City Engineer James Wright. He will present Recreation Facility Overview, and he will be followed by Deputy City Manager and CFO, Mimi Terry, to discuss ARPA funding guidance. And I might add at this point that this is the first of several presentations staff will be making as it relates to capital improvement projects. The last presentation will be a consolidated list of schools and city projects ranked by priority by both schools and city staff.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of the City Council. This presentation is going to provide a brief update of recreation facilities citywide, and then take a look at some of the rendering for potential improvements at the Cavalier Manor Recreation Center and at Sports Lights. So first, we'll go through the list of recreation facilities. Cavalier Manor, repairs and development of the Cavalier Manor, repairs and development of the concept plan, which I'll show you later, recommended for ARPA consideration. For the Sportsplex, the master plan, which I'll show you some concepts in a few minutes, recommended for ARPA consideration. The Charles Peak Little League Fields, which you've seen in previous meetings. I'll refresh your memory with that rendering. Renovation of this entire complex is recommended for ARPA consideration. City Park, Phase 2 of the master plan is currently underway. That has three concepts that we're reviewing. We're narrowing it down to two concepts to take back out to the public. The consultant's currently looking at funding considerations for that and he will be presenting us funding options for those proposed improvements. The neighborhood facility, the roof in HVAC repairs. That bid package is under review. We look, we're looking to advertise that within the next two weeks. Churchland Soccer Field Lighting, Churchland Little League Upgrades. Those repairs are recommended for ARPA consideration. Prattick Skate Park Relocation, recommended for ARPA consideration. Senior Station Relocation, so some minor repairs are recommended. If council chooses to move forward with the Sportsplex, the relocation for the senior station will be part of that overall master plan. Port Norfolk Recreation Center repairs are recommended for ARPA consideration. Upgrades at the Olive Branch Little League Parks and Recreation still needs to meet with the league. Maplewood Park, at your last council meeting. Mr. Dorian Finney came to you with the partnership that he has with the city. This is an ongoing project using CDBG funds and private partnership with Mr. Finney and his partners, the NBA and Nike. Basketball Court at Eighth and Jefferson, I'll be, is currently looking at rehabilitation through the CDBG program. So this is the concept for the Cavalier Manor Recreation Facility. City Council expressed desire at a previous presentation, look at both Cavalier Manor site and the Sportsplex to basically dream big and look at what those sites could be. After looking at several renderings with the consultant, we, we drilled down as a staff and finally got down to this concept that you see before you. So you have three components, fitness and recreation, gymnasium, and a pool. The total area is just under 60,000 square feet and the conceptual budget is $24 million. And here you see some additional renderings, street views and fuse internal to the lobby. Looking at the fitness and recreation component, it'll have a commercial kitchen, computer lab, cardio and weightlifting, game room, lobby slash lounge, meeting room, multipurpose fitness studio, nursery, office suite, and a recording studio. Gymnasium have two full-length, will have a full-length basketball court, two, two cross courts, gym storage, locker rooms, multipurpose, multipurpose activity court, and an option for a running track suspended above the courts. The pool will be eight-lane, 25-meter competition pool, a leisure pool, and also have locker rooms if phased. That concept would need further development. We'd have to take that out to the public if council desires to move forward so we can flesh it out more and come up with those exact components and programming that will go into the facility. So for the Sportsplex, we have two alternatives. The first alternative is focused on passive recreation. Alternative 1 includes a dog park, playground for kids 2 to 5 years age, 2 to 5 years, 5 to 12 years, skate park, additional parking, walkways such as trails and/or sidewalks, non-structured recreational outdoor space, 50-meter swimming pool complex, a sheltered area, spray park, basketball courts, stormwater management, and space for relocated cooperative extension and senior station along with community garden and a greenhouse. Some additional information, slides about how, how alternative 1 could potentially look. The price tag for alternative 1 is between 80 to 90 million dollars, with the bulk of that being the natatorium complex, which is based on the complex that was just recently built in Arlington County. And that comes at a $60 million price tag. Alternative 2 is focused more on active recreation. Those elements include an outdoor activity complex, which includes basketball and multipurpose courts, playgrounds, spray park, and a concession area. A leisure swimming pool facility, dog park, a smaller skate park, an expansion of the existing building with office space for parks and recreation and space, once again, for relocated cooperative extension and senior station along with the community garden and greenhouse. This concept is between 40 million and 50 million dollars, with the majority of that being the 28 million for the pool and water park complex. Do you want me to continue or to pause for questions at this point about the concepts or?
We do have some questions, so Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
So for the, the Sportsplex renderings, so for me, when I think of a Sportsplex, I think of something like what they got in Virginia Beach. So are we looking to do something on the inside with multiple courts so that we can possibly host tournaments and actually bring money to the city? Because I think with a Sportsplex, we don't only want it just for recreation, but we want an opportunity to bring in money to the city so that we can help lower our taxes and put money into our, our, into our base so that we can help with a lot of different things in the city.
Yes, sir, understood. I don't think that was part of the initial conversation that we had. We just wanted to look at those two initial concepts to get those in front of City Council with the, if City Council decides to move forward on either one of those concepts to go out to the public and then to have that public engagement, to have the, the public provide feedback as far as what those amenities and what those things would be that will go into eat the facilities, whether it's option 1 or option 2.
All right, so just, just from my standpoint, I don't know how council feel about this, but if you ever been to the, the Sportsplex in Virginia Beach or the Sports Center, they have a lot of different things and they have like, just the Sportsplex, it has four courts in it and they host AAU tournaments. And that brings in so much money for the local businesses in the area and just the surrounding area in general. I would like to see that so that not only are we providing recreation for our children, but we also bringing a tax base, we're bringing an income for the city.
Dr. Whitaker, and then Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Right, I, I think that that is something to give some serious consideration to that as we look at developing these different complexes, that not only do they serve the local community, but they're, they have the flexibility to attract then events such as the sporting events, the, sort of like the Boo Williams model where you, you know, you have the track and basketball facility. So that, that would be something that should take, that should be something that is considered, that type of flexibility of the facility.
Yes, sir, Councilman Whitaker, and that's something that we can definitely take into consideration, but just want to remind you that those facilities, those larger facilities like that have a, a much more space than we, so we would have to do something like that on a smaller scale. I just wanted to put that out there. But yes, that's definitely something we can look at moving forward.
And I, I did have another question, Mayor.
You have the floor, sir.
The, the facility that you're looking at in Cavalier Manor versus what you're looking to do at the Sportsplex. The Sportsplex facility, that $80 million price tag, the facility that you are looking to do in Cavalier Manor, is there any particular reason as far as duplicating that at the Sportsplex site at a, at the similar cost?
They were looked at by different consultants in, individually in their own, basically their own area. Moving forward, we'd have to combine those efforts and make a determination as if you have this facility here, you don't want to create a competing facility to take away from that facility. And both of these two projects, should they move forward, in whatever manner they move forward, we'll have to have a lot of public engagement and additional conversations with City Council. But the, the thought moving forward was to look at each one of these sites individually, come up with the best options from a staff perspective based on programming that what's discussed, bring that back to City Council and get some additional direction prior to moving forward.
So, so as far as, as far as the facilities, you were saying that you were looking at them as far as a, a competing perspective that one may draw from the other? Is that what you're saying?
So if, for the pool, for instance, if you're, it, it depends on, on usage. So you take a look and see if you're having competition type style pool in events that, one, do you need the same or similar at the other facility? Can you potentially have just a competition pool at one? Have some other type of amenity at this one? And so those considerations haven't taken place yet just because we want to get in front of you with just the, the concept for what each facility could be. And then there's the timing because of the cost figures of, you know, which facility is moving first or they move at the same time? So how, how are we going to do, basically progress and get to where we want to go?
Because the, the ultimate goal is to provide the facilities and the communities that meet the needs of the residents of the community.
Correct. And the Cavalier Manor facility can be built in two phases. The Sportsplex can be built in several phases just because you have a number of different amenities out there that don't necessarily depend on each other to move forward.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. How are you doing there? I do appreciate your presentation. I, I think I agree with my colleagues as well. I, I think we all are looking for facilities that we can use to attract families to our city, to be able to pay for certain things, we can host certain competitions. And I would like to see as well, like you say, it may cost us more, we can do it in a, a smaller version of it. But, um, you know, I went to the Virginia Beach complex and, you know, I know Vice Mayor Barnes is talking about basketball, but when I went there, they actually had toddlers, you know, they had young kids playing indoor soccer. You know, they, they, they're getting exposed to different sports early on, you know? And, and I think sometimes we kind of, you know, we minimize some of the, the, the sports that our kids can get involved in. And when I seen that, you know, I was, I was baffled, you know, I was flabbergasted. I was like, wow, you know, they are really, you know, training these kids up a little bit early. So, you know, I would like to see that as well, you know, soccer tournaments are pretty huge as well. You know, a lot of clubs travel, they play each other throughout the state. So, you know, I, I just think we got to sometimes think outside the box as well when we are putting these, these sportplex, on Sportsplexes together. But hosting is, is a major opportunity that we need to take advantage of. I, I think this past weekend, Vice Mayor Barnes, he's been running his program and whatnot and it's a lot of college mates that have their kids involved in his program that I didn't know of. But what I'm figuring out is that some of the neighboring cities, their programs are kind of breaking down and ours coming up. So, you know, we got to make sure that when we come out the gate that we're having all the facilities prepared, we're having all the options for the kids and, and we can now take on, you know, that, 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 I, I guess that statement that we can be a, a city that has a great recreation program for kids and families. So, you know, that's what I'm looking for and I'd like to secondly with my, my colleagues.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor, you have the floor, sir.
And to kind of go with Councilman Woodard, Woodard said, not, they had indoors soccer, they also have volleyball. They have that on the inside and outside. They have a little, little part like it's like the beach on the side of the, the, the Sportsplex where they play outdoor. They have a, a play park inside the rec center. So it's just a lot of different things and that, that specific facility attracts so much and then the businesses surrounded. Also, they, because of what's going on at the, the Sportsplex, there's a lot of businesses being done to the restaurants, the stores, the local businesses that they have around there. So for me, that's why it's something that I would like to see enforcement because I think that we can also tap into that as well and help bring some of those, those events here and also help lower our taxes and provide funds for things that we need where it comes to police raises, providing money to the staff, I mean, to the, the school staff and different things like that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wright, I, I did have a couple of points and then a question for you. So you did mention something which, which I think is important to know. You know, a lot of these facilities like Boo Williams and even in Virginia Beach, I mean, they have the infrastructure to have the bigger facilities. And a lot of those facilities are engaged in public-private partnerships to fund the facilities. I know Boo Wooden, Boo Williams facility was a public-private partnership, of which at the end of the day, he ended up selling back to the city of, I think it was Hampton. And in Virginia Beach, they have a huge infrastructure with supporting amenities like hotels and things like that. The reason why I bring that up is because when we're looking at conceptually or even thinking about a community center and what it brings, one good example would be the Croc Center over in the city of Norfolk. And the Croc Center was a public-private partnership as well. One of the things are we considering perhaps in bringing a facility, which I think would be great? I like the idea of the Sportsplex, making it a wonderful facility that everyone can come to and attract all those different groups of citizens to come and have wellness, exercise, and activities. My question is simply, have we looked at perhaps doing public-private partnerships in our desire to have a facility?
I think all options are on the table. I think initially what you do is you, you come back with a concept, get some feedback to let people know that you're serious about the things that you're talking about. Once people see that, it sparks interest. Once that interest is there, then you can move forward and develop those partnerships that you're talking about and move forward with these, with these, some of these larger projects.
Thank you, sir. If you want to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. So looking at Charles Peak Little League Field, you've seen this rendering before. This is taking the existing fields, redoing the entire complex. One larger field, one senior field, I think it is, and then the three smaller fields, confession area, two parking areas and, and other amenities. This would be at a cost of $4.7 million. And then just to revisit these other concepts that you've seen before. This is the completely renovated athletic complex at IC Norcom High School. Showing the field house, the turf field, the renovated baseball and softball fields and other amenities. Because of the way that this needs to be constructed, with the exception of the tennis court, everything ends up shifting and this would all have to be done at one time. And the, the estimate for this, the price tag is 6.7 million. The turf field is about 1.8 million of that and the field house is just about 940, $940,000. Churchland High School, once again, it's a total upgrade of that athletic complex. Field house, turf field. The tennis court shifts over by the parking lot, lighting and some other upgrades. It's at a price tag of $4.8 million. The field house is approximately $750,000 and because of the way this can be built, it's recommended that this construction be phased. Manor High School, similarly. Field house, turf field. There's an access road that they currently do not have and some other amenities. $4.6 million total with $750,000 for the field house. And once again, it's phased and looking at additional improvements to recreation facilities in the school system. The gym bleachers at IC Norcom need to be replaced. Lakeview Elementary is the only elementary school where it does not have a gym, so the gym addition, replacement of the gym floor at Churchland High School, and then to upgrade all of their playgrounds specifically with respect to ADA compliance.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, for the presentation. On the school updates, upgrades, I guess the infrastructure, is that included in the cost? And also, does the cost include any cost sharing with the school board? Or is this all what the city would put, put forth as far as the investment?
For the school fields, there's currently been no funding identified. This is the estimate for the overall project. This is just the estimate for the overall project, so that's 6.7 for Norcom is the entire complex, including soft costs. I stated just because council expressed interest in the turf field and the fieldhouses, those components of each one of those, I sort of broke those out, and stated those, I looked at each one.
Madam City Manager, you had the, had the floor?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to add to that point, that what you're seeing is just, at this particular time, just the recreation programs. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to come back with a consolidated list of all the projects. Keep in mind that we've already talked about schools, a new school, so you will see a complete consolidated list prioritized by the projects. The priority will occur between school staff and city staff collectively. So you're just seeing recreation at this point. You're also going to see in an upcoming work session, information on infrastructure, particularly utilities, to hopefully give you enough information, so that when we start talking about affordability, then you'll know those projects, and you'll have a clear understanding of what those projects are.
Thank you, ma'am. And Dr. Whitaker, sir, did you want the floor?
Yes, sir.
You have the floor, sir.
Mr. Wright, do you, you have any estimates? I know this is, is from the schools, but do we have any estimates on the different items on page seventeen?
For their, the four items that I just showed you at the end of the slides?
Right.
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
They're still working on those.
Okay.
But we are working closely with them, and providing them whatever support they need, as they go through their CIP wish list and things that they need.
Right. Now, when you, when you have on page, on page four, when, when you list the different projects, and then you say recommended for ARPA consideration. Right, so for those projects where it says recommended for ARPA consideration, does that mean that the remaining ARPA funds that we have not allocated yet, that these are, this is a source of funding for these different projects?
So a, as I understand it, for the, the pot of money that's becoming available in July?
Right.
These projects are part of a list of projects that'll be coming back before city council for consideration.
Right, so these projects could qualify for ARPA funding?
Yes, sir.
Could be sourced through ARPA funding. So when you, when you give us a, let's see, where is it? So for example, the Cavalier Manor, that was on the, that was on page three. So when you give us a price tag for the Cavalier Manor project, and the others, some of that could be subsidized through ARPA?
Yes, sir. So when those come back to you for consideration, the number that you see attached to each one of these projects will be the revised estimates to include whatever recommended repairs of facility, and development of the concept plan, if you're talking specifically Cavalier Manor. If you're looking at Charles Peak, it'll be for the total cost, and as you step down through it, it'll be for each set of either targeted repairs, or development of concept plans, like Cavalier Manor and Sportsplex moving forth. So that number that you see the next time will include all that information, yes, sir.
Now, the, the infrastructure that would be involved with some of these projects, would that fall within the infrastructure bill?
Actually, we're going to cover that in the next session. We're going to walk you through all the categories. James is going to give an update on what's available in the infrastructure bill, the process of how to go through it, that's at the next presentation.
Okay, so none of these projects would fit within the infrastructure?
They could, but there, there's not a guarantee that we're going to get that money, and he's going to talk about that process when, at the next presentation.
Was it Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question, and the, the great presentation and great plan, operating budget, have we put any thought to what the potential operating budget for the facilities would be?
We are, we are looking at the operating budget, and basically, since we already have programs there, then it's just a reallocation of the staff that we have that are currently performing. We may need additional part-time staff, but that's something that we've already covered.
Yeah, I would, I would think so, because some of these facilities are going to be a lot larger. And, and my other question is, the conceptual budget, how, how did we come up with the figures?
So staff, working with the architect, looking at programming, that the space with each one of those components takes, based on their experience designing similar facilities, and facilities that have recently been constructed, came up with a square foot cost, and applied that to that sixty square, sixty thousand square foot total, along with some contingencies for soft costs.
Okay. Does that, does that conceptual budget include the equipping, the equipping the facilities as well?
Yes, sir.
So that's turnkey?
Yes.
Okay. Reason why I ask, the Cavalier Manor Recreation Facility, that looks like it would be a great facility. I know the Williams Farm Facility in Virginia Beach, which I think is their newest, probably opened, I don't know, six, seven years ago. I think that's seventy thousand plus facility, and I believe that opened, I think the cost was twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six million. I know things have gone up, but that, that looked like a much more expansive facility, probably at a lesser cost. I don't know. Have we, have we visited that particular facility?
I know that during the, during the conceptual phases, the consultants, two different consultants, speaking with staff, and working through the concepts, visited several facilities to take a look and to get ideas, and then drawing from their in-house teams on facilities they worked on comparable. So a lot of work has gone into that, from a conceptual phase, looking at what's out there, so we're sort of not reinventing the wheel, using things we have that are familiar to both our staff and their staff.
You know, before the train gets too far down the track, probably be a good idea to do a field trip, and, and visit some of the facilities that have been discussed, like Virginia Beach's facility, the Williams Farm Facility, the mayor mentioned the facility that I haven't been to over Norfolk, but I think it'd be a good idea for us to get an overview of what, what's out there, and what, what, some ideas that we might bar as we move forward. Maybe the manager, if there's consensus to do that, we, we could pair up and visit some of those places. I think it would be good, myself.
Madam Manager?
If you're speaking for council, because staff has done that, so I would be, I mean, if there's consensus from council to do that, I would be happy to work with the...
Do, do we have a council consensus to have the manager organize some visits by council to some of the facilities, just to see what, what they have? Show of hands?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it.
I don't, I don't, no, I could drive there on my, on my own.
Well, however we want to do it, but I, I suspect we could get a list of facilities, perhaps, that we can all go visit, either at our leisure, or with our colleagues, and as long as it's the same listing of facilities, I think everybody will get a pretty good, well-rounded view. Is that acceptable?
Well, I, I think if it was organized versus me jumping in my car and showing up at a Norfolk facility, they're not going to know me from Adam, but I think we coordinate with the management of the cities, I think it'd look, look a lot more professional, and we'd probably get a better overview of what's there.
Well, I think we do have a consensus to do the visit, so if, if folks do, would like to do it a different way, certainly that's their prerogative, okay? But Madam Manager, can you organize that for the, the council? Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Wright, I did have another question on page four. Notice that you indicate some of the funding could be through the Community Development Block, Block Grant. Are there any other considerations of using those funds for any other projects?
These two parks were already in the action plan, that were, that was approved by city council as part of the last budget. When the planning department's developing their CDB budget, they look at those facilities that are in underserved areas that meet the objective, and determine what type of improvements that can be made. So you see here, several facilities that were programmed as part of the last budget, being the two basketball courts and neighborhood facility, coming up, they'll continue to look, to look at those facilities that would, that would meet that objective, and yes, I guess, to be short, there is potential for other facilities, as long as they meet the objective of the program.
Of the CDBG program?
Yes, sir.
Right, right. Will that, will that be something that council will visit during our budget season, as far as the, how these CDBG funds have been allocated, used?
Yes, we always, well, I don't say always, we will present a CDBG proposed budget of the projects, and then council will make the determination as to accept it or ask for additional changes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your presentation. I think you were at the Q and A here, too. You may begin, sir.
Okay. Leveraging resources. So I'm going to do overview of the Building a Better America Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, and then I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager, Mimi Terry, to lead you in an ARPA discussion. So the Building a Better America is a $65 billion investment in the nation's infrastructure. And information from the White House, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law will rebuild America's roads, bridges, and rails, expand access to clean drinking water, ensure every American has access to high-speed internet, tackle the climate crisis, advance environmental justice, and invest in communities that have too often been left behind. So the funding is going to be spread across 350 distinct programs, across more than one dozen federal departments and agencies. The funding availabilities is for a five-year period. Sixty-five to seventy percent of the funding is going to be distributed through existing programs. There are no direct payments, there is not enough funding to address all needs across the nation, so all communities, urban and rural, will be competing for the, for the same fund, urban against urban, rural against rural. Most grants will require some sort of, some sort of non-federal match, whether that be fifteen percent, twenty percent, or twenty-five percent. There is continuous guidance and resources available through federal agencies and interested stakeholders, such as the National Legal Cities. They've started a webinar series on each funding category, starting last week, they've had two already, there's another one, I think, tomorrow, and at the end of the week, and so they'll get through all the categories, and other agencies are doing the same. So these are the, the funding categories, so there are four major categories you see here, transportation, climate, energy, and the environment, and then broadband. Each one of those, as, as applicable, have subcategories. What you see here in bold is the categories that align most with city, city goals, projects, and potential funding sources. So you see roads, bridges, major projects, ports and waterways, safety, electric vehicles, buses and ferries, energy and power, water, resilience, environmental remediation, broadband, Departments of Health and Human Services and Interior Programs, transportation programs, and solid waste and recycling programs. So what staff has been doing since this announcement's come out, we've been using a strategic approach to leverage city resources, so there's been ongoing staff coordination to look at these available opportunities. We've met on a larger scale with a number of different departments, and those consultants that we have under annual services contracts that have experience in applying for these types of grant opportunities, that have had success in applying for grants. Similar to these, because these are existing programs, to align either projects that we've currently been considering, or projects that we might consider, to make sure they're compatible with the grant descriptions, because it does cost money to put together a successful competitive application. We don't want to throw money away by just putting in an application that, just to just, just throw it out there. We want to make sure that we're putting together a good application, that there's good information, that we're telling the story. A lot of these, these programs are now adding a component for disadvantaged communities or underserved communities, so we're, we're telling the Portsmouth story as we develop these applications, so that they understand the population, so they understand our challenges, so they understand what things we like to get moving forward. We're working with partners and stakeholders to back city efforts, we're working with elected officials, such as Congressman Scott, Senator Warner, we're getting letters of support from folks like the PDC and the TPO, we're getting, we're providing input through our legislative affair, management legislative person, Ms. Neal, where applicable, to sort of direct funding to certain agencies that have the capacity to handle this large influx of money, for instance. If DCR is not set up to do a program and administer a program, we'd rather see those funds go to the Department of Health, who might be better set up to administer a program, and won't have so many complications getting through that, through that process, so we're working every avenue and every channel that we can, to make sure that we can leverage our resources and take advantage of these funding opportunities. And I'll take any questions about this part of the presentation.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. The funding categories that you mentioned, the ones that were in bold on page four, those are, those are our existing programs that, that would be applicable to the sixty-five percent of the funding that's going to be allocated?
So not every category is going to fit with, with the projects that we have. Based on the programs that are aligned under passenger freight and rail, we don't have any projects that are going to fit in that category, so we're going to throw that out, not even waste our time looking at it. But roads, bridges, water, environmental remediation, broadband, those have different funding components under those that we're looking at, to sort of align projects better with those, flesh them out, talk about them, develop a game plan, and decide, do we move forward with that? Yes, if we don't, no, then move on to something else. That's the process that we're taking as we go through, looking at each one of these categories, looking at all the projects that we have, and working with our consultants and the, and the different departments.
And does the remaining thirty percent mean that could be allocated to new programs of infrastructure?
Correct. So some of the programs, this is a five-year bill, so some of the programs haven't been developed yet, they're putting out, putting out notices to the community, to different community stakeholders that are going to be looking forward to that, to get information and feedback about how to develop the programs, and then, at some point down the road, that, that percentage will come, those new programs will come out, and then when they come out at that time, we'll make a determination if they're, they're going to offer up an opportunity for us to move forward, and try to capture some of those funds as well.
Right. And my last question, I guess, the meeting with our Congressman Bobby Scott and King, well, I guess it's going to be not equitable for every locality, like the ARPA funds, but it'll be based on the locality's needs, so, I mean, all cities won't get the same amount, will it be based on the existing projects that they have in place, or how is that allocation going to be set down?
It's a competitive grant, so it's going to be placed on the grant, so whatever that project costs will go into that grant application, whatever your local match is, you will have to have that, or at least a commitment from, from the body, from the city, that they're going to be willing to provide that matching, and so you're going to have to describe the project, tell your story, hit all those metrics within the grant, if they ask for a, a cost benefit ratio, you're going to have to do that, and then If they ask for a cost-benefit ratio, you're gonna have to do that, and then check all those other boxes. From the legislative perspective, we're seeking letters of support. Are we doing the things we're supposed to be doing? Is there anything out there that, in our discussions with you, that you may know about that we don't know about? Basically, are we going down the right path? And so that's how those conversations are going with the legislative bodies.
Thank you.
Madam Manager?
I just wanted to point out one of the encouraging pieces of information that we've heard as it relates to this process, is as it relates to cities with high poverty levels, that it's a possibility that those matching requirements will be reduced. So we're tracking that, and hopefully that will remain. But we stand in a really good position to not have to pay the full matching because of our poverty level.
Councilwoman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
All matching is not cash. Most of the time, matching is in in-kind services or the in-kind services that the city will commit. So when we're thinking about that we gotta put money in it all the time, that's not necessarily the case, in my experiences with some of the largest grants that ever come to the city. So they'll, sometimes they give you either/or. So we'll just have to wait and see what the criteria is. It's gonna be in reference to any funding, whether it's matching or in-kind.
Mr. Smith?
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
This doesn't have to be responded to, this email. You can send it through email. I'm just curious, when, under climate, energy, and environment, when it says resilience, what is that speaking to? And also, environmental remediation? Just curious.
You can go ahead and answer that, if you don't.
He can send it to email.
That's fine.
I'm gonna put him on the spot.
Okay. But one of the things I will add before you sit down, I had a very engaged conversation with Congressman Scott last Friday. And to Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke's point, when I asked the question, I said, you know, what do we go after in terms of these grant opportunities that are gonna be coming online? He said, "Apply for everything." So just wanted to give you that. And I'm sure you all are doing that, applying for everything, right?
Within reason.
Within reason. That's right. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Terry, how are you this evening, ma'am?
Good evening.
You have the floor.
Honorable Mayor, Council, Administration, Portsmouth Citizens, Madam City Manager. So I'm before you today to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act, again, ARPA. Just gonna go briefly through this because we've discussed the categories in the past. ARPA is a two-part allocation. In entirety, it is $56 million. And again, these are the categories that we have addressed in previous meetings. City Council has approved ARPA projects. $6.2 million are projects that the staff is developing an application process or criteria. These are projects that have been approved by City Council. Projects in progress are $26.4 million that we are currently in the process of working on, have begun design, have requested information, or are currently doing or have done. And that equates to $32.7 million. The second allocation, as we addressed in previous meetings, is $24.1 million. They include projects that would be addressed in July or as we continue to meet on those specific projects. Portsmouth's community is currently funding partnerships. There are 28 funded partnerships working within the community with parks and rec, with schools, with just different projects across the community. What I wanted to bring to this slide is, during the budget process fiscal year '22, Councilwoman Battle at some point brought up that we wanted to have additional programs for kids, extend the programs in schools, extend the programs for after-school care. She's very adamant about doing that in last year. And so what I wanted to do is show the testimony of that action, where council approved additional funding to do that. And so we have a testimony, several testimony, from parents that said the programs are So where we are now is council's partnership funding. Council added an additional $1.5 million to cover programs and extend recreation hours to provide after-school activities. We have gun violence grant of $495,000 to dispatch violence interrupters and outreach workers into the community to prevent violent crime. Where we are now, council asked that we bring back one of the categories to discuss further action, ARPA allocation of $1.6 million. So where we are now is we would need direction as to reduce the funding in a current approved ARPA category, or funding a category remains an item for second allocation of discussion. Program award and funding criteria. If it is the desire of council to move forward with the $1.6 million allocation within this current allocation, Portsmouth resident, these are the criteria that the organizations would need to meet. Portsmouth resident and/or service the Portsmouth area, organization must be a 501(c)(3). You have to be an active business, operating with two-plus years minimum, up to date on Portsmouth business license. Organizations currently working in partnership with the city will be or will have priority. Funding will be on a reimbursement basis, and program must satisfy ARPA reporting requirements to end the spread of COVID-19. In-kind contributions will be considered. Some could be labor, if the program meets criteria to satisfy reporting requirements of the state. Grantee must include how program aligns with COVID-19-related activity, state, some most federal. Oh, cool. So I'm gonna go back to the $1.6 million as it relates where it fell on the further discussion category for the second allocation, for crime reduction strategies. And where we need to determine where these funds will be addressed, or how to address those. I'm gonna go back to the council-approved ARPA projects. So where we are now is the $26.4 million is already in motion. The senior tax relief, senior care, universal payments, COVID-19 incentives, local small business and minority business development of $6.2 million. If we would want to divert, reassign, address, I would need direction from council as to how we would like to handle that.
Dr. Whitaker, then Vice Mayor Barnes.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Terry.
Hello.
The gun violence grant, $495,000, has that been allocated?
Yes. In order to receive those funds, we had to submit a budget, the police department. That grant is within the police department, and we have several partners with different organizations who are getting paid out of that grant currently. Currently, we've spent about $222,000 out of that grant to date. Well, no. By the end of June, we proposed to have spent just on community partnerships, about $220,000, which is what the grant allowed.
Okay, so you still have about $270,000 to be allocated?
Not, yes and no. So let me explain. With that being said, there are requirements that the grant, you have to meet. Those funds that were allocated for certain programs are already in play. All of the money was not dedicated to certain programs, just a small percentage of the grant. Some of those dollars were for overtime for police officers, consultants. There were some for equipment, travel, additional things of that nature.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Well, I was just curious if there were funds available still to, because we had talked about some of the groups. And I'm looking at rec need and this $1.6, and just trying to see if there was another source other than that ARPA source.
Right. So with the grant, they had several nonprofit organizations that were already in that grant. That's how it was able to get approved, through the grant, DCJS. So those, I think we have, Give Back to the Block.
Yeah.
There was one act now, at one point, Stop the Violent 757. Those are already a part of that police grant.
So each one of those individual organizations were funded?
Correct.
Can you send us a breakdown of how much each one received?
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
That was one of my questions, too. Also, as far as the $495, could we just get a detailed breakdown of that again as well? When you send that, as far as?
Also, I wanted to point out that the police, the Portsmouth Sheriff Grants, they actually received some funding from the general fund budget. But they also received funding because they have a program as well. But I will definitely send that breakdown.
Specifically for the $495?
Absolutely.
And my other question is, I see that we do have projects in progress. Any particular reason why the first six aren't in progress and when they were supposed to be put in progress?
Staff is developing an application process on this evening. One of the things that fall in that category has to have an ordinance approved by City Council, which will be before you this evening. And that is the senior tax relief, because that has to be an ordinance approved by council.
So how soon, so for these six projects, do you see any of those six projects being enacted after the July date?
That would be to the pleasure of council.
So I know they voted on it already, is what I'm saying. So the time that it's gonna take to get all the necessary criteria and things together that you guys need, do you see any of those happening sooner than July or after July?
We, now. I guess, so that I'm clear on my position. Because council has already approved those projects, it would be up to council to take them off and say, move those to the next allocation or move forward with them. So based on council's direction, that would determine where we would go next.
Mayor.
City Manager Jones, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, if I understand the question, I think what is being asked, are we going to have the policies and procedures in place for those items prior to July 1? If that is the question, the response is yes. We are working on that criteria now.
Okay. So if we were to add the $1.6, take something off, how long would that take to get that enacted, the $1.6?
If that's council's direction, we can act that we have the criteria set. It's just a matter of putting out notice and ensuring that the public is aware that those funds are available.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, did you want the floor?
So at this point, you just put in the application together, so this shouldn't take, what's the expected rollout so that citizens can start receiving the direct basic payments?
The hopes was, at the start of July 1, that the payments can start rolling out. Because what we wanted to do was make sure we were fine with our fiscal year end, we have budget coming up, and then preparing the application process. So the expectation would be that they would start receiving funds at the beginning of the fiscal year, which would be that July 1 timeframe. So this is now March. So we would have April to have the application. They would have to qualify. We would have them with the application process. That would be it, at least by July 1.
So I guess I'm trying to, so if your applications are in place and the citizens can apply, does it have to be a July 1 date? It can't be sooner?
It can be sooner.
Because the funds have already been allocated for, and so we should move on that as soon as possible so that we can give some relief to the citizens.
So with the tax relief, if it is a desire of council to approve that tonight, then that would start July 1 because that's the first date. So that's why I choose July 1 as the target date, because everything would be rolling out at that time. But there's no hesitation to go ahead and move forward with the direct payment, with the minority business development program, with the local small business, with COVID-19 incentives.
Right.
We were just trying to straddle them in while we were doing our budget. And just in case you all had some additional requirements or desires to change, maybe you see a program working but wanna add more and take it out of general fund. So yes, July 1 was the date, but can it be done sooner? Absolutely. But definitely, the senior tax relief, July 1.
Right, right. I would say the sooner the better, because the citizens are struggling. And we have the money, and it's sitting there, and let's go and get it out to them.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Terry, thank you for the presentation. Just one quick question on page 14, the program award and funding criteria that's listed there.
Yes.
Some of these programs have already been receiving funds to implement their activities. Is that correct? Or, so this is just, I mean, a follow-up? Is this the outcome measurable goal that we're gonna be looking at to determine if they've done everything that they're supposed to do?
Right. I'll let you.
I think I'll jump in here.
City Manager Jones, you have the floor.
Yes, what that criteria is, it's for ARPA-specific funding. The federal government came out with additional guidance stating that they wanted to see the impact of these funds. So we have to then, on our end, make sure that we're capturing those metrics. But in addition, when we talk about partners, keep in mind that as a part of our Recreation and Parks Department, we seek partnerships all the time. Their contract, they're broad honest contractors to do specific projects that meet objectives that have been designated by this council during the budget process, things that address self-esteem, things that address physical, emotional, all of those types of things. We look for partnerships that another entity can provide, in addition to the programs the city provides itself directly. So that's what the partnerships that you saw, the 28, that's what that's referring to. That's separate and apart from ARPA. Some of the organizations may be the same, but that's what we're referring to when we talk about the $1.5.
Councilman Barnes, I mean Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
Quick question, and I know we're working with different organizations and things of that nature. What are we doing to monitor if their program is actually working and if we should still continue to fund those programs?
One of the things that I know we look at are the metrics, the number of kids served, what the outcomes of those programs are. And so we continue to evaluate that. That's one of the things that the Recreation and Parks staff does when they look at some of these programs. They look at what gaps we have in the city, what's not being provided, what are some of the best practices that have been exercised in other localities that have seen results. We look at a multitude of things to determine if we should leverage our city resources with theirs. Another thing that we look at is the ability for them to deliver on those programs that they're providing. So it's a... So, it's a, it's a, it's not just a get, you know, sign up and, you know, get, become a contractor. We do an evaluation process determining that it's a good fit.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah.
And Councilman Woodard, after you, sir.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn when I said to Ms. Terry we want to get those payments out. I think it should be, make sure it's a consensus of Council to do that, so that staff won't say that there was no consensus of Council. So, if we could take the consensus to direct CFO to disperse the, the universal basic payments with all deliberate speed.
Before we vote for the consensus, Madam Manager has asked for the floor.
Yeah, I would just say to direct me instead of CFO.
Direct the City Manager.
Yes, thank you.
So, we have a, we have a request from my colleague, Dr. Whitaker, to have a consensus to move forward with the direct payments with all deliberate speed, as it were, to the City Manager. Show your hands with the consensus. You have a consensus, ma'am? Vice Mayor Barnes, and then Councilman Woodard.
I think I, I think I spoke already.
Okay, I thought you had your hand up.
No, I was raising.
Oh, okay. My fault. Sorry. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate your presentation to Ms. Mimi Terry, but I, I know I spoke about this $1.6 as well for these organizations, and I, and you told us in the past that you was working with the 28 organizations. And now, we're saying that the gun violence grant, the $495 is taking care of these organizations. Is that, is that what, it's not?
Not all.
It's just adding to it, just adding to it right. So, that's what I was speaking of. Are we going to get a, a printout or a, a, a metrics of what you guys was originally doing and where that money was coming from?
We, we will definitely provide an accounting of what we're spending the $495 for, the programs that the grant is providing, because a number of the initiatives in the grant are new. The outreach, the violence interrupters is a new concept, and that's something that we've added to our police toolbox, if you will, is to look at that. And of course, we're looking at how effective that program is with this, with these grant funds. The other components of the grant, as it relates to equipment and things of that nature, we can definitely provide an analysis of what's in the grant and what, how the grant is being used.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Oh, Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
I did want to say that I was one of the, well, I was the one who asked that we bring this back up for the, to, to, to see if we can make some changes and put into $1.6, but given what's already in progress and what we have, what we in need to put in progress, I'm okay right now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Terry. Thank you for your presentation. And Madam City Manager, in the interest of time, is it possible that you could provide our report backs to council, members of council? In the interest of time, because we're running short on time.
Oh, sure, I can do.
Okay. And our city?
I can do that later.
Yes, ma'am. And our City Council liaison reports, we can get those via email as well. So, everyone that's a liaison, if you could please provide an update, if you have one, that would be appreciated, since there are no more items on the agenda for our work session.
Before, we, we will not need to go into a closed session. We have the evaluation instrument that the clerk has made copies of for everyone, and so, we can just pass these out to each individual, and they're due back by the 15th. March, March 15.
And if I could just ask of the Personnel Committee if we could just remind everybody, get that back in the email, I'm sure you sent it out already.
I will.
Right. If you could just remind us all so that we can get that evaluation information done.
Okay.
And seeing no more business of order for this work session, this meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene for our regular council meeting at 7:05. 7:05.